Welcome to our January 18th regularly scheduled school board meeting. Want to recognize any visitors that we may have, any audience? We typically would have representation from our library system, Mr. Alan Harkness, Mary Ann Rickner from the museum. If we have any principals or school leadership teams, if you rave at us, principals back there, thank you all for joining us. And now we will move to our inspiration as we have just come off of pausing in observance of Martin Luther King Jr. Holiday. Ms. McCray?
Okay, there I am. Y'all can hear me? So this first one is one by Martin Luther King Jr. It is "Intelligence Plus Character." That is the goal of true education. Again, reminding us that we are educating the whole child. And then the second one is "Everybody Can Be Great Because Everybody Can Serve." Again, service is why we're here tonight, too. Thank y'all.
Thank you, Ms. McCray. Next, we'll have St. Elmo Center for the Gifted to come in and give us our Pledge of Allegiance. Come on in, boys and girls.
I pledge allegiance for the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Go right ahead.
My name is Zoe Hudson. And I'm in third grade. And my teacher at St. Elmo is Ms. O'Connor.
I'm in first grade. My name is Jones McCann. And my teacher in St. Elmo is named Wes Woods.
I'm Jamelle Wiley. My grade is first grade. My teacher at St. Elmo is Ms. Woods.
I'm Charlotte Williams, and I'm in first grade. And my teacher at St. Elmo is Ms. Jordan.
I'm Addison Williams, and I'm in fifth grade. And my teacher at St. Elmo is Mr. Faust.
Our character word for this week is generosity. This means to be unselfishly willing to give and share your time and talents at home, school, and community. Thank you.
Thank you. Outstanding. And we have our principal here, Ms. Lopez. Are there any parents in the audience? If you would stand and wave. Thank you all so very much. That was excellent students. Good job. Next, we have an eighth grade student. Madison Wells. Oh, oh. There you go.
Good evening. My name is Madison Wells, and I'm an eighth grader at Veterans Memorial Middle School. I'll be reading a selection from Martin Luther King's "I Have A Dream" speech. I have a dream that one day the state of Alabama, whose governor's lips are presently dripping with the words of interposition and obfuscation, will be transformed into a situation where little black boys and black girls will be able to join hands with little white boys and white girls and walk together as sisters and brothers. I have a dream today. I have a dream that one day every valley shall be exalted. Every hill and mountain shall be made low. The rough places will be made plain, and the crooked places will be made straight. And the glory of the Lord shall be revealed, and all flesh shall see it together. This is our hope. This is the faith with which I return to the South. With this faith, we will be able to hew out the mountain of despair, a stone of hope. With this faith, we will be able to transform the jangling discords of our nation into beautiful symphony of brotherhood. With this faith, we'll be able to work together, to pray together, to struggle together, to go to jail together, to stand up for freedom together. Know that we will be free one day. This will be the day when all God's children will be able to sing with a new meaning, "My country, just to thee, sweet land of liberty, and that thee are seen, land where my father died, land of pilgrim's pride. From every mountainside, let freedom ring. And if America is to be a great nation, this must become true. So let freedom ring from the prodigious hilltops of New Hampshire. Let freedom ring from the mighty mountains of New York. Let freedom ring from the heightening alleghanyes of Pennsylvania. Let freedom ring from the snow-capped Rockies of Colorado. Let freedom ring from the curvaceous peaks of California. But not only that, let freedom ring from Stone Mountain of Georgia. Let freedom ring from Lookout Mountain of Tennessee. Let freedom ring from every hill and every molehill of Mississippi. From every mountainside, let freedom ring. When we will let freedom ring, when let it ring from every village and every hamlet, from every state and every city, we'll be able to speed up that day when all of God's children, black men and white men, Jews and Gentiles, Protestants and Catholics, will be able to join hands and sing in the word of the old Negro spiritual. Free at last, free at last. Thank God Almighty, we are free at last. Thank you.
Good job, Madison. Any parents or supporters of Madison in the audience? She's eighth grade, so she's not driving. All right, very good. And what about the principal or anyone from the school? All right, thank you so very much. Good job, Madison. We are very proud of you. All right. We're ready to approve the agenda, but first I'd like to ask for a motion to excuse Mr. Cantrell and Dr. Sly.
What about Kathy? Move to approve.
That was motion by Ms. Chambers, second by Ms. Buckner. We'll take a hand vote. All right, that passes. Next is item 1.05 is a motion to approve the agenda.
Move to approve.
Motion by Ms. Chambers, second by Ms. Buckner. Hand vote. All in favor? All right, that passes. And we move into election of board officers. Turn it over to Mr. Ellington.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So at the first meeting in January, the first regular meeting, voting meeting, which is tonight, the board elects a chair and a vice chair to serve for the coming year. So a nomination of vote and five affirmative votes are needed to carry an election. I'll now open the floor for nominations for the position of chair.
And I do want to say that I think Ms. Williams should be on Zoom. Right? That's affirmative. All right.
Are there nominations for the position of chair? Yes, Ms. Buckner.
I'd like to nominate Mrs. Pat Green for board chair.
I'll second it if anybody can hear me. Anybody?
We can hear you. And I'll point out that a second is technically not necessary, but it certainly doesn't hurt, so. So Ms. Green has been nominated. Are there any other nominations? If not, we'll close the nominations, and I'll now call for a vote. All in favor of Ms. Pat Eaglely-Green to serve as chair for the coming year? Please show your affirmance by raising your hand. That appears to be unanimous. Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, that carries. Congratulations. I'll now open nominations for the position of vice chair.
I would like to nominate Laurie McCray for vice chair.
All right. Are there any other nominations for the position of vice chair? All right, hearing none, I'll close the nominations. And again, we'll raise our hands. All in favor of Ms. McCray serving as your vice chair for the coming year, please raise your hand. And that appears to be unanimous. Congratulations to you.
Madam Chair, can you hear me? May I speak?
Yes.
All right, thank you. First, I'd like to thank you and Representative McCray for allowing me to be virtual. I'm moving week, so I'm literally moving my residence around the block. But I'd like to say this. I've been on this board for a long time. This leadership is both dynamic, effective, and efficient, and I cannot speak highly enough for this team. So thank you to the board for affirming it. And I just want to make sure that everybody knows that this, we are on a good track, and the leadership is why.
Well, thank you, Ms. Williams, and thank you to the board for the opportunity to serve as we continue to become a premier governance team. And I really thank you for your leadership in the community and for being so cohesive on this board. So thank you all. Thank you. You want to say anything?
Back to you, Madam Chair, for the 2.04, which is the...
Thank you, sir. All right, so that concludes 2.03 and 04. We took consecutively. Now, I already recognized the visitors. Again, you are welcome. We have district recognitions that... Which one? Oh, the other ones. That is important. Our superintendent typically serves as our secretary of the board. That is mandated. And our parliamentarian is the school board attorney. And we also vote to have Paul Booth Smith represent us as our law firm. Do we have any questions? And treasurer is our CFO? Ms. Bloodworth. Okay. Are there any questions? Motion to approve. Motion by Ms. Chambers, second by Ms. Tilery. Any other questions? Hand vote. All right. All in favor, raise your hand. And that passes, and our students are here. And I'll turn it over to Ms. Lawrence to do our district-wide recognitions.
So as you all probably know, I'm sorry, this mic's a little loud. But as you all probably know, in December, the Carver High School Tigers were able to compete as in the 4A varsity football championship game. And although they were runner-ups, they represented our city so well. And so we would like to take this opportunity to congratulate Coach Joyner and his team that is here with him. We're going to allow them to introduce themselves.
Good evening to you all. My name is James Jackson II. Where I currently attend Carver High School, where I'm a senior and the captain of the football team.
Good evening. My name is Cameron Crowell, I attend Carver High School. I'm a senior, and I'm one of the captains of the football team.
Good evening. My name is Kobe Pasmore, I attend Carver High School. I play defensive vet for Carver High School.
Good evening. My name is Samori Turner, I attend Carver High School, and I play linebacker.
Good evening. My name is Nate Bailey. I'm a senior, and I play linebacker in I attend Carver High School.
Good evening. My name is Malik Jones. I play outside linebacker for Carver High School.
Coach Watson.
Good evening. I'm Coach Joyner, Carver High School head, football coach, and also athletic director. We want to thank the board and also Dr. Lewis for inviting us and for everyone that supported us throughout the season. This has been a marvelous season for our team. Not only are there good football players, they're also a good student in the classroom as well. So they excelled in the classroom, and so it just spilled over into the team, onto the field. So we just want to thank everybody for their support. Thank everybody for their prayers and everything that they've done. And hopefully, we can get ourselves back next year and win it all.
Are there, by any chance, any parents here typically? When they get to high school, we don't see any. All the supporters, Falcone and staff, I did see Mr. Lindsay. Congratulations, guys. We are extremely proud of you, and we thank you for the way you represented the Muskogee County School District. Ms. Buckner?
I was just saying, Mr. Lindsay is here tonight.
Yes, he's in the back.
Man, a few words. Or no words. Ms. Lawrence?
So next, we have our January ABCD Award. And I have been told as leading up to this that this is really special. This is one that has captured the hearts of many, so I'm excited to read, and they will put it on the screen as well. James Hildebrand. And I will, James, I will ask if you come up, please. I know you don't like the spotlight. James Hildebrand joined the Muskogee County School District in July of 2019 as a police officer. In May of 2021, he was promoted to police corporal. He was nominated for the ABCD Award by Laura Solomon, science teacher at Columbus High School, and Chief Gregory Arp, who describes him as "selfless and professional, with an innate ability to build relationships with everyone he encounters." He is also described as an amazing person. According to Ms. Solomon, Officer Hildebrand makes everyone's day better when they see him. He makes it a point to develop personal, yet professional, relationships with students. He has made Columbus High a better place to work. I appreciate the kindness and dedication he shows daily to his career. I really think that he loves coming to work. I like hearing that. I have never seen a happier person at CHS. Officer Hildebrand really creates a positive environment while providing security for the students and faculty. I do not think there is a more deserving person in MCSD. Chief Gregory Arp agrees with Ms. Solomon's sentiments, adding that he has distinguished himself during his tenure at MCSD through his selfless contributions and dedication to the mission of the district and school police department. His calm demeanor, quick wit, and eagerness to help others are a few of the reasons I can wholeheartedly recommend Corporal Hildebrand for the January ABCD Award. Mr. McGar, Assistant Principal at Columbus High, sums these sentiments up by describing Officer Hildebrand as being "everything to everybody." The MCSD Police Department functions under the leadership of Chief Arp, and we are so thankful that the HR team is here with us to present the January ABCD Award to Officer James Hildebrand.
Oh, boy. Okay, they gave me the awards and then took them back. I feel like I've already been upstaged tonight by Ms. Lopez and the great group from St. Elmo. Thank you for doing that and all the other presentations that we've had. Just want to say how grateful I am for this award. It's humbling. But as I look back on my career, I've received a few awards in my few years that I've been in law enforcement. Actually, it was 30, I began my 38th year in law enforcement this year. But this is one that really is special to me because it has to do with relationships. And three years ago, when I went to the School Resource Officer Training School, the first thing they instilled in us was this job is about building relationships. And that's what I've tried to do all my life, but especially being a school resource officer at Columbus High School. Great bunch of kids, great faculty, great staff, great admin. Anybody could pull this off, working with the people that I work with. I would like to thank my wife and two of my children that got drugged down here tonight to see this happen to Dad. My parents are also here, other friends and colleagues. And my parents had me when they were real young, so they're still... But I just want to thank everyone for the part you've played in this and for helping me along the way. Dr. Lewis, I hope that we can cheer on Columbus High's flag football team and the championship again, state championship. You ought to see this guy jump when he's excited about the team that's out there. But Chief, thank you for everything you've done. I tell Chief often that every day I thank God for bringing the two of us together so that we can serve here in the district. Hopefully, I didn't forget anybody, leave anybody out, but thank you so much.
If, Madam Chair, if I may take a moment, personal privilege. First of all, I want to thank Officer Hildebrand because he represents our department here that we created just a few years ago very, very well. He certainly personifies all of the core values, the expectations, and all the great things that our police department does represent in the school system each day. But I think also a little hint into who he is and what he does. On the first day of the second semester, I was going around visiting schools. And as you know, we've had trouble with some of our bus drivers because of some being sick and that kind of thing. So, we've had some delays. And he's laughing because he knows what I'm about to say. So, I was driving back from one of the schools and was driving down Cherokee Avenue and came across about four young men who were walking to school. And I called Chief Arp and I said, can you send Officer Hildebrand or somebody that's close by just come with me? I want to stop these students and make sure they're in school and find out what the cases. So, Officer Hildebrand showed up, stopped traffic, allowed me to get out in my car. We went over to the young men and as a result of that, helped me hand deliver those students to Jordan High School where they belong. So, I appreciate making sure I didn't get hit out there on Cherokee Avenue. So, thank Officer Hildebrand, appreciate your help and support.
Congratulations to you and thank you to your wonderful family for the support that you have. That's awesome to have such family support. Does that conclude our district? All right, thank you very much. All right, we move into the public agenda segment. And we have two people signed up, Ms. Teresa Elamine and Brandy Pollard. Is Ms. Pollard here? All right, we will move on, but I do want to just let the public know that all official meetings of the board shall be open to the press and the public. However, the board may meet in executive session. Citizens are encouraged to address items on the board agenda or to initiate presentations of issues appropriate for school board consideration. The board meeting is not the appropriate place to review individual employee performance or individual parent complaints that have not been addressed by the principal or the superintendent. Citizens are encouraged to follow our normal channels to address such problems and issues. So, we're going to move into our action agenda. As you can see, it's relatively short. Item 6.01 is the appointment of Director of Programs for Exceptional Students. Superintendent is recommending St. Crystal Poitras to serve as Executive Director for Exceptional Students. There's a motion by Ms. Jackson, the second by Ms. Chambers. Are there any questions? Hearing none, we are ready to vote. Is it showing up for anybody? There we are. Are we waiting on anyone? All right, that passes. Ms. Poitras? Dr. Poitras? It's Dr. Poitras.
Yes, ma'am. Look, you guys had me a little nervous there for a second.
That's designed that way. This delay is built in to amp up anticipation and anxiety. Don't worry, I feel the same way too when I'm waiting. Welcome and congratulations, ma'am.
Thank you. To Dr. Lewis and to Dr. Ward and to the Board of Education for Muskogee County. Thank you so much for this opportunity. I am so excited about the opportunity to be able to serve in this capacity. I want to also thank my family, my husband and my kids, my mom, my dad. And I have some friends here as well and some faculty members from my old school. They're always supporting me and kind of holding me up, so I really appreciate them. And I just can't wait to get started with helping and supporting the school administrators and the faculty and staff with upholding and beating the district's goal. So, thank you so much for this opportunity.
Congratulations again. Okay, family, stand up or wave your hands so we can say you thank you for your support. Thank you for being here. Outstanding. And I think I see your PES family. Y'all want to stand up and wave so she can see you came out? Whoa, very good. Outstanding. Item 6.02 is the appointment of Director of Virtual Education. Superintendent is recommending, okay, let's put that back. The appointment of Stacy Martin to serve as Director of Virtual Learning Programs. Motion by Ms. Chambers, second by Ms. Jackson. Are there any questions? We are ready to vote. See, Dr. Poitras is not just you. All right, that passes. Congratulations. Ms. Martin? Is she here, Ms. Martin?
Thank you. It is a little unnerving, waiting. I am so honored to be recommended and approved for the Director of Virtual Learning Programs for Muskogee County School District. And I would like to thank Dr. Lewis and the board for entrusting me with the responsibility of directing the creation of a virtual learning program for Muskogee County students. I want to thank Mr. Pleasant, Mr. Barden, Mr. Seifert, Mr. Baker, Dr. Nelson, and Ms. Thomas for seeing my passion for virtual learning and for our students in Muskogee County. I want to thank my current administrators for encouraging me to pursue this position and to grow in Muskogee County. But most importantly, I want to thank my biggest cheerleaders. My very good friend, Principal Penny Gorham, my parents, Larry and Susan Wade, and Pat Maxwell, and especially my husband, Todd Martin, they're always supporting me. The possibilities for online learning are limitless, and I look forward to what we can create for the students in Muskogee County. Thank you.
Congratulations. All right, family and supporters, wave your hands so we can see you. Very good. Congratulations again, Dr. Lewis.
Yes, just as a reminder, this is part of our vision we've had in place now for some years, going back from my tenure playing, but also more recently and more pressing is the fact that with the virtual learning that we've experienced over the last year or so, we've certainly seen the need for it. This is, if you recall last month, this is part of the first phase of implementation and development of our virtual learning program for Muskogee County School District. And we're really excited because it's going to be a very unique approach in the fact that it'll be Muskogee County teachers, ultimately it'll be Muskogee County teachers teaching Muskogee County students and beyond, as the need dictates and as there is an interest. So, we are very excited about what the future holds and we're very pleased to turn over the inaugural reins of the program to Ms. Martin. Congratulations, thank you.
Item 6.04, Superintendent is recommending the approval for Brewer and J.D. Davis Elementary School, the architectural firm of... Am I missing? 6.03, thank you. Our board meeting schedule for 2022 is motioned by Ms. Buckner, second by Ms. Chambers. Are there any questions about our schedule? We are ready to vote. All right, that passes. Now, 6.04, Superintendent is recommending to our, to WR Architect Firm for the construction projects at Brewer and J.D. Davis Elementary School. Motion by Ms. Chambers, second by Ms. Jackson. Are there any questions? We are ready to vote now. All right, that passes. Moving on to 6.05, Superintendent is recommending the approval of Barnes Gibson Partners Architect for the construction projects at Lonnie Jackson Academy and Rothschild Middle School. Motion by Ms. Buckner, second by Ms. Jackson. Are there any questions? Hearing none, we are ready to vote. We're going fast, but at some point, Ms. Buckner's going to interject her disclaimer. Hold on, hit your...
On last week, was it last week?
Yes.
With the holidays kind of confusion, on last week, we thoroughly discussed all the items that we are moving through quite quickly on tonight, but they have thoroughly been vetted. And each month, we have a work session. And in that work sessions, session, we discuss each of these items and so that on the meeting night, we can go rather smoothly through items and move quickly.
Thank you, ma'am. Item 6.05 is passed. Moving on to 6.06, Superintendent is recommending the architectural firm Heck Burdeshaw for the construction projects at Wenton Arts Academy and Key Elementary School. Motion by Ms. Chambers, second by Ms. Jackson. Are there any additional questions? We are ready to vote. All right, that passes. Next item is 6.07. Superintendent is recommending the approval of the $120,000 contingency fund to complete the Columbus Museum alterations project. Motion by Ms. Buckner, second by Ms. Chambers. Are there any additional questions? Hearing none, we are ready to vote. Big families, that's what we do. Loud. That passes. 6.08 is the resolution to withdraw the HVAC part of Brewer Elementary School from Wenton Arts Academy and Dawson Elementary School from FY18 entitlement application. Motion by Ms. Chambers, second by Ms. Jackson. You want to speak to that?
Just as a reminder from last week, this is withdrawn just as a matter of timing issue and be resubmitted at a later date. So, it'll make the timing that is required for us to receive that additional funding as part of the outlet, the matching outlet. Yes.
We are ready to vote. All right, that passes. Finally, we're at our consent agenda, which has also been thoroughly discussed. Are there any items, board members, that we need to review, pull out, vote on separately? All right, that motion by Ms. Buckner to approve the consent agenda is second by Ms. Chambers. We are ready to vote. Are we missing anybody? All right, there it is. That, the consent agenda passes. And always, we want to tell our donors, we have item donation list that we receive each month for all of the public part, private partnerships that donate to our schools and to programs and within the Muskogee County School District. Thank you very much. We could not do public education at this level as well as we could without public-private partnerships. You want to add anything? Do you, you want to wait till next month to... All right. Everybody, it's just moms, we ready to go, right? All right, Dr. Lewis, I'll turn it over to you before we mask exit. It's your microphone so you can speak.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a reminder that as you all know, we're continuing to monitor conditions with COVID-19 and we will continue to do so. As most of you know, we had hoped to be able to move to mask optional at some point after the MLK holiday. But obviously, with the surge we encountered over the last several weeks, we are continuing with our mask mandate as most districts, I think, are at this point in time. So, I just want to thank everyone in the community, as well as our parents, obviously, and our students, faculty, and staff for their understanding and cooperation as we go through this difficult time. We are working as closely as we can with our medical panel, who are local experts in the medical field, to ensure that we're doing what they feel like is in the safe and safest and best interest of all of our students and the community at large. With that in mind also, we've encountered some winter weather. Some of you saw over the Sunday, we had some snow flurries, which is quite unique for our area. But there is potential for some additional cold weather coming in this next week, Thursday and Friday. Again, I want everybody to know that we work very closely with our weather experts in our local community, as well as in Peachtree City, to monitor those conditions and make decisions relative to school and transportation, so on like that, very judiciously, working with those experts to make those decisions. So, just want everybody to know that, that we are not making these in a vacuum. We're doing that with the expertise of the weather experts in our area to help us inform our decisions. And finally, I just want to recognize and thank some members of our team. Starting Sunday through next Tuesday, the Georgia Association of Educational Leaders is hosting their winter conference in Athens. And we have had two groups selected to speak and present best practices at that conference. Our Department of Teaching and Learning will be working with some of our folks from Department of Information Services to present about our personalizing, personal learning, personalized learning initiative that we're very excited about. We are one of the leaders in the state, if not the southeast and country in that area. So, we are very proud to be able to present that. And our Student Services Department is also going to be presenting, working with and discussing how we've been implementing multi-tiered systems to support the MTSS model and how that's impacting our students going forward. And it's very timely, both those topics, both personalized learning and our MTSS implementation. So, again, just want to congratulate them, thank them. I'm looking forward to being there cheering them on, Sunday through Tuesday. We can be very proud of the fact that we're taking the lead in some of these very important initiatives, especially as they focus on teaching and learning and student health and learning priorities. So, thank you.
Thank you so much for that update. And just to add to your comments of putting everybody on notice about the wintery weather, that also means for us parents to be prepared to support our students with virtual learning at home. Be prepared. Get your babysitters lined up. These are the awards that we did not have down here with us last week. Our, this group of excellent community leaders, the Muskogee County Board of Education, was presented, the leading, well, the district group, along with the board, received the Leading Edge Award for 2021. And our Board of Education is our governance team... Exemplary Board. Exemplary Board, thank you. Had a brain cramp. Yeah, it takes a village. See, they're so awesome, they already knew what I was thinking. Just couldn't get it out of the words. So these are the awards, we're very proud of our team and thank you all for the support that you give our, our boys and girls as well as this governance team, our leaders here in the community. Motion to adjourn? Anyone want to have anything to add? All minds are clear? All right, motion by Ms. Chambers to adjourn, second by Ms. Buckner. That's a hand raised. Good night. And congratulations to you Georgia fans.
And to you Florida State fans.